States of America into the Republic which sustains one nation under God in the digital with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I need to make an agenda amendment. First off, for the Ann Harrison's here was to be what the Historical Society gets really for certified local government reports, so that would be the minor change to the agenda. Next, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Oh, I'll make a motion to change that, plus we also need to change something else. We need to change nominations for Kelly Short for Supervising Representative of Assessors Examination Board. That needs to be done at conference board.
Can we nominate him here as our representative? Do you want to discuss it here or?
I think you guys, from my understa- excuse me, from my understanding, you can make a recommendation, but it can't be like a formal approval. So you can make a recommendation to submit his name for the supervisor's representative, but all the formal approval comes on the other end.
Okay, right.
Do we say that or how do you?
Um, yeah, I was just restated. We stated it's making the motion to amend the agenda to add the Ann Harrison's change.
Secondly. Favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next, approve the minutes for February 18th, 2025, regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approved the employee claims filed county auditor for $145.12.
So removed.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Claims filed county auditor for $222,269.28.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Alright. Uh, next items for discussion, place on file following the newer management plans, F and F four Liberty Township, section 25.
I'll make the motion to put it on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next, meet with May and she's here. On the MHDS transition update. Morning.
We're glad you're here.
Hi.
How you holding up?
I don't know if we've met.
No ma'am, I'm Keith.
May and she.
Test me.
So, how am I holding up? That's a great question. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know that I'm, I'm gonna tell you anything today that you don't already know, right? I just wanted to have the opportunity to discuss it in public session, right? So, um, last year, the legislature passed House File 2673, which realigned the mental health and disability services system into almost, um, to, to, two prongs. One of them, the behavioral health system, and the other, the aging and disability services system. So they are now two separate divisions at HHS. The realignment then, um, created something called the Administrative Services Organization for Behavioral Health and what they're calling Disability Access Point for the Aging and Disability Services. The Disability Access Point is one component of the Aging and Disability Services. There are other services that go in with, as far as like aging services go, and that's, uh, we'll remain with the area agencies on aging. So we don't wanna make it sound like they're not still, um, going to be doing their jobs. So, um, for this process with the realignment, the state requested a procurement process where they, um, released a request for proposals in, uh, September, September 1st. I think I was here after that and said, yay, you know, they released it. We worked on our proposal. So we had the intention in the East Central Region to partner with our neighbors from the Eastern Iowa region, five counties south and east of us, to be one, um, partnership that to apply for District Seven. So there were seven behavioral health districts in the state of Iowa, and we applied for District Seven. So that announcement of that award was set to come on December 31st. On December 20th, we had to submit our proposal for the Disability Access Point. So there was like a lot going on at once. Um, I spent my entire fall, you know, going around and meeting with people and talking to people about our intention and, and developing those proposals. So we sent in the Behavioral Health ASO proposal on October 18th. Mid-ish November, we had a bidders conference for the Disability Access Point work. At that conference, the HHS said, we're encouraging regions, because only regions applied for the Disability Access Point work. And they were encouraging the applicants to consider more than one district up to statewide. And so we were like, what are they trying to tell us? So, um, they told us that on a Tuesday, they said they were gonna release the RFP, an amended RFP on Thursday. They did Thursday at noon. They gave us until Friday at 3:00 PM to decide. So I think I talked from Tuesday till that Friday. I think I stopped talking, you know, I'm just getting everyone's advice and a couple times with our board and, you know, all of those discussions, our staff, um, our partners in Eastern Iowa region. So on that Friday, the East Central Region did send in an amended letter of intent for statewide Disability Access Point. So it was in mid-November. On December 13th, two weeks, well, 18 days early, um, we found out that we were not selected as the Administrative Services Organization. No MHDS regions in the state were. Um, Iowa HHS forwarded that to the Iowa Premier Care Associates, which is the network of the federally qualified health centers. So that, um, agency was named as the ASO for the entire state of Iowa. Um, that was December 13th. If you remember what I just said, on December 20th, I had to submit our proposal for the Disability Access Point. So with a very broken heart, I had to dig real deep and turn in a proposal the next Friday for the Disability Access Point. The procurement process for the Disability Access Point, um, indicated that, that HHS would make their decision about the Disability Access Point, um, last Friday. We still don't know. They have not announced their decision. So, um, emails that some of my colleagues have received. I haven't emailed the state because of my colleagues have been emailing them and the, um, language is soon. So they have their own procurement process that they haven't followed and they haven't named the Disability Access Point. I presume sometime this week.
That just goes against every good faith effort, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Well, at least it won't affect the state.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right.
It doesn't affect any of us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So statewide, there are about 200 people that work for MHDS regions who, depending on what they decide for Disability Access Point, right, will be out of a job. So, um, the way that the bill reads is the law, because Governor signed it right away, um, is that Chapter 225 Iowa Code, Administrative Code, Chapter 225C sunsets on June 30th of this year. That is the code that governs regions. So once that code goes away, the regions are terminated. The regions dissolve. Um, there's a new code section, 225A, that will go into effect on July 1st. And that code section will have the language governing the Administrative Services Organizations and the Disability Access Point. So.
We don't know a whole lot more than we did four weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the Disability Access Point, no, but, um, some things I do know from four weeks ago. So you know that, that we set priority initiatives every year. We set priority initiatives that, that relate to our strategic plan every year. And we have usually, I don't know, 12 to 14, 15 priority initiatives. And the ones that we set this year for FY25 were all about the transition and, you know, being a good transition partner, um, because, you know, we thought it was gonna be us. And we kind of tongue-in-cheek, we set a priority initiative at the end that said, reevaluate priorities if needed on December 31st, because we thought, oh, you know, we'll see what happens. Um, and as I told the Regional Governing Board, you know, that was easy to say when we hoped it would be us, but just because it's not us, doesn't mean we can't, can't and aren't still committed to the work we do. We are a region until June 30th. And so, um, my staff, um, worked together on creating some language for some new priority initiatives, which the Regional Governing Board approved at the January. It's just now the February meeting this week, the January meeting. I think you may have it, but I brought paper copies.
That's good.
Yeah. Um, I have extra for anybody who might like them. So, go through these really quick and kind of talk about some of the things, John, that I have found out in the last month. Um, so we say we'll support the transition, right? When the lights go out on the region on June 30th, and it's July 1st, and people who receive services go to their services on July 1st, I don't want them to notice any difference, right? If somebody's going to, to supported employment, or if somebody's going to outpatient counseling, if somebody needs crisis services, I don't want the people who receive services to notice any difference. So we will be a good transition partner. Um, we wrote in there, uh, new and existing partners, because there is a new partner on the scene, um, the, the designated ASO. So we are committed to being a good transition partner. Um, we also, the second one there, ECR, will maintain the highest level of commitment integrity in administering services. This one was actually the only one that carried over almost word for word that we know, we have, we still have work to do for the next four months. Um, and we will maintain our commitment and integrity during that time. Um, ECR will ensure that people who are served, staff members, um, staff, board members and the external partners receive information. There's a lot of not information, right? And when there is, there's the absence of clarity, then there's a lot of fear and there's a lot of speculation. And so we're trying to do a good job of communicating as, as much as what we know as soon as we know it. We have a newsletter that goes out to our staff every two weeks. Uh, we've instituted this fiscal year, because we're super clever, Q and A with May once a month. Um, my administrative team, I talk to them almost daily, but like people who are a little bit further away in the, I don't mean geographically, I mean just like organizational chart, a little further away, don't get to see me and like know everything that I know very often. So once a month, we have an opportunity for them to come together and ask me questions and just hear the update. So, um, and you know, I mean, we have the, the weekly, I do a weekly update to board members. I don't know if you share it. Some of the board members do, but, um, I do a weekly update to the Regional Governing Board, just trying to keep everybody, um, in the loop. So, um, the next one is regional staff well-being and occupational changes will be supported to minimize the impact, um, of the challenge related to the transition. So we've got 34 people who are losing jobs at the end of June. Um, certainly in some counties, there's different variations of that, but, um, as, as our system where the region reimburses the county for employee costs, that is ending June 30th. Some counties then, um, some counties have already issued termination letters. Um, some counties are trying to make it work, but we, we know that there is a system that is being put together to take care of the people who receive services, right? We're gonna hand that over and we're gonna do, we're gonna do a good job of doing that. And there's contracting that is being put into place so that our providers still get paid. Nobody from a system perspective is looking out for our staff. So that's our job. So the first, um, first thing I did was on Monday, we found out on Friday, and on Monday, I contacted Abbey Center for Community Mental Health, and all of our staff are eligible for up to five mental well-being sessions. It's not quite counseling. It's like counseling light. Um, it's a, it's an opportunity to process kind of what they're going through. We're a mental health agency, right? We need to take care of the mental health of our staff. We also have Dr. Selena Perman, who has been a wonderful partner. She's an HR professional. Um, she's extremely talented. Selena will be with all of our staff tomorrow, offering resume, job seeking and interview assistance. Selena will be bringing other HR professionals with her. So just helping our people like, okay, we have to transition here. We also, um, we have a representative from Ipers who will be with us this Wednesday. We have a representative from Iowa Works who will be with all of our staff. I think it's next Wednesday. It might be two Wednesdays from now. So doing some things to help our staff as they think about transitioning. I had one staff member tell me she hadn't completed a job, a job application since 1997, right? I mean, that's how long people have been with county government. Um, how long the counties have administered this, this system and, and now it's, it'll be going away. One of the other things that we did that I believe that you also have is a memo that I sent to the Regional Governing Board requesting a retention program for our staff.
That makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Um, I want people to, to take the opportunities that come for them, right? I don't want people to pass up opportunities because I want the best for our staff. But on the other hand, I've got to balance with, we still have obligations as a region until June 30th. And so the retention plan is progressive. Um, each month you stay, you get a little bit more of a bonus to, that's really not enough to like convince people to turn down positions, but it's enough to thank those who do stay and, you know, who stick it out with us until June 30th.
Question on that. Is there a way for, as they continue to stay, is there a way to hold that money back? So then on their last day, when they decide to move on, then they have like a bigger amount of money to move on with?
Mm-hmm. That's a good question. Um, I would think that would be up to, I'm looking at you, Chris, that would be up to each county? I don't know that the Regional Governing Board would make a decision on that, but as a, a, a relationship between the employee and the county, if they wanted to hold that, I have no idea. Yeah.
You'd want some additional discussion there, um, that might bump them into a higher tax bracket though as well, so.
I have been told that retention bonuses like this is a higher tax bracket anyway.
Okay.
And it's like, our employees aren't gonna see that amount every month, and it's a, it's a higher tax rate than their normal wage.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that that would.
Maybe, so probably we could follow up.
Maybe we, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and we would want to check with the employees too.
Yeah. Let me look into that. Spray that up. Um, and then the last thing, other things, you know, we're doing other things with our staff that are kind of still in development yet, but trying to just help people. Um, I've offered to be a refer, you know, to all of our staff, write letters of recommendation and help people to move on. Um, the last thing is the, the transition plan. So this is what I know that I didn't know four weeks ago. We met with HHS two weeks ago, and we were informed that we would be required to write, uh, a transition plan and submit it to HHS in lieu of the annual service and budget plan. Usually, usually we have to do our annual service and budget plan due April 1st. The transition plan will now be due April 1st. We have yet to receive guidance on what needs to be in it. For me to have it, um, approved by the Regional Governing Board on March 27th, I'll have to have it in the board packet on March 20th. So I've got three weeks here, and I have no guidance yet from HHS. We've got what they told us verbally. Um, they told us they would not be developing a template, and they hoped that, they announced at a statewide CEO meeting, that we would work together, so we did. So we have a template, um, that we're working with, and, um, actually I had my administrative team meet with me last Thursday, even though we don't have the guidance yet. We got started working on the transition plan. I'll be discussing it with the Regional Governing Board this week. One of the things that they told us is, because I didn't know, right, the region ends on June 30th. We will not have all of our bills from this year on June 30th, right? They come in in July and August and, you know, September, we close the book, September 30th. So I didn't know if we were gonna like write a check to the state on the third, on June 30th, and they would pay those accruals, or they would ask the ASO to pay the accruals? And they said, oh, no, 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 we won't be doing that. You're responsible for that.
I have a question on that, though. All of our staff is gonna be gone on June 30th. So, and there's no governing board anymore to approve those claims.
So, what they told us is, they said, you can keep people around to approve and to pay the claims. And I said, will there be an administrative cost that's allowed for that? Because people aren't gonna stay for free.
Right.
And they said yes. So, we are working on a plan, uh, we'll discuss with the Regional Governing Board this week, but we, HHS told us that the transition plan could have a date as long as up to December 31st. Like, we could take six months to close out the regional business. Um, we would like to retain our attorney. We would like to continue to pay our fiscal agent, which is Johnson County, to actually pay the, pay the bills, the invoices. Um, and so we are working on a plan and a budget that would allow for us to stay, some people to stay, and to close out the regional business. We're looking at a, a tiered system where we would have, we're thinking right now about three to three and a half staff, July, August, maybe just two in September, and then drop down to one for like October, November, maybe December. Just tier it down. Um, because after September 30th, and, and we will have communication out to the providers, you can't be late on your bills. Like, you need to get them in, right? So that we can get the bulk of them covered in July and August. So one of the reasons, um, that we came up with this plan on Thursday, that I was so grateful that I was here with you today, is we have two staff in Buchanan County that we would like to include in that plan. So, um, I think it's okay that I say it. Say who?
Yeah.
Okay. Julie Cameron, if she, um, does not have a job, would stay on full-time with us? If she does have a job that she transitions to, would be willing to do a part-time to help process the claims. Julie Davidson, same thing. So, I'm here to ask you, and I'm very sorry that I've just found this out two weeks ago, but to consider that in your FY26 budget. It would be 100% reimbursed. It would be no Buchanan County risk, but it just needs to be, you need to have the budget authority to do it.
Would we be maintaining an office here from them, work ethic?
I think that would be up to you.
Me?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
They already, yeah, they already have, we already have an office.
So, I mean, it would be kind of up to you. If you're like, hey, we already had a plan for that office, and we would like you to work remote and do this work. I think that's up to you. I'm happy to support whatever you would like to do.
We would need, because of the claims, claims coming in mail, and you know, just having that.
Mailing address.
And, and having.
The fiscal address.
Right.
Right, but I'm just thinking, because we've got confidential information, we would have to have a plan in place if it wasn't going to be remote or.
Yeah.
Having that locked.
I just think makes sense that.
Yeah.
It was, you think it, just as we are.
I just didn't know if you had already started making plans.
No, we weren't gonna, we're gonna kick this out, yeah.
Yeah.
Can't do anything differently or do anything.
So, my plan is, and with, with your blessing on that, we're putting together the budget. We will, we have to submit at the same time, you have to submit your budget, and I know that you probably already have your, your public hearings scheduled. Um, if that plan is not approved by HHS, then I guess we turn off of the computers and we lock the door on June 30th, right? I mean, I, I feel like it would be very difficult for them to not accept it if they want to continue to have the FY25 bills paid. Um, so we would have a staff in Johnson County, and Johnson County, of course, being our fiscal agent. So we would have a process in place for those claims to be approved. Um, and we'll discuss that at, at the board meeting on Thursday as well, because as you said, technically speaking, I mean, HHS has said to us, 225C goes away, but 28D doesn't. Your board can maintain their authority established under 28D. So they could choose to remain the 28D agreement and not terminate it until December 30th as well. 31st.
Oh.
I know. I know. And I don't know, I, I don't know which direction.
One sided.
Yeah.
Just gonna throw that out there.
Yeah. Feel so. Yeah. Yeah. Um, if we are named the Disability Access Point, um, our discussion will be different. I, I hope I know that by the Regional Governing Board meeting on Thursday, but at this point, I'm not holding out a lot of hope. Um, they've already missed their deadline, so. Yeah. It could, my phone could be ringing right now, or it could be next Monday, you know, like, I just don't know.
But what they're gonna be called now, it's not, no longer gonna be the East Central Region. What be the?
Um, you mean if we're named the Disability Access Point? We probably will rebrand, but we haven't crossed that bridge yet. Let's see if.
That rebranding would cause a lot of confusion.
Well, there's gonna be confusion.
There's, there's.
Try to minimize it.
Yeah, there's confusion no matter what here, so, yeah. Yeah. Been a lot. Um, oh, something else I wanted to talk to you about. County's responsibilities for commitment costs do not change. So right now, Buchanan County pays for the mental health advocate. Buchanan County pays, I'm not sure exactly how you guys do it here. I would assume the Buchanan County Sheriff's Department sends a bill directly to the region. Would that be correct, Julie? Okay. And the attorneys who represent people in commitment also send their bill directly to the region. Okay? Buchanan County, just like right now, your risk is the cost of the mental health advocate. House File 2673, it was strike and replace. In Chapter 229, which is the mental health commitment law, it, where it used to say, the region reimburses the county for the patient advocate, strike and replace, it says ASO, okay? But what we've been told, and you apparently will be getting direction from the Department of Management and the State Auditor's Office, have you heard anything yet?
No.
How about that? Um, is that you will be informed that if you, as the county, it will be a, a, a pay and chase system, invoice and reimbursement system. If you, as the county, would like to maintain the control, was the word they used, not my word, um, you, Buchanan County, could pay your own sheriff, could pay for the advocate, could pay the attorneys, and then just send one bill to the ASO and be reimbursed. You could choose to do that. You could also choose to say, sheriff, bill the ASO directly. Attorneys, bill the ASO directly. You would just invoice the ASO for the advocate. So things that you need to think about, I just want to prepare you, because it's a pay and chase, I would recommend that you have at least one quarter's worth of expenses in your FY26 budget, because the region used to pay you upfront. The ASO will not. You'll have to incur the costs and then bill the ASO.
And depending upon how on top of it they are, we could get money the next month, or we could get our money from us from that.
But I assume that you have, I mean, you have the advocate costs in your budget anyway, even though it's budget neutral, so you're probably fine with that. And I just wanted to make sure that you understand, it'll be a reimbursement method now rather than that payment upfront.
Please.
Yeah. Any other questions, thoughts?
A lot to digest, if you can imagine where you're at right now.
It, it, it's, it's been a lot. It really has, yeah. A lot of sadness, you know? I mean, it's not easy to go to work every day and plan for your own unemployment. And that's kind of what we're doing. And in some respects, six months doesn't seem like enough time to transition this, and, and other respects, it feels like too long. You know, from the emotional standpoint of it, it's like, this will happen for six months.
And you're done that, you just walk out with your head held high.
Yep. Yep. And that's why we kept that priority initiative. Yeah. Alright, well, thank you so much. I'm sure I will be back before June.
Thank you. Well, best of luck.
Thank you so much.
We'd love to keep, uh, Julie's here.
Yeah. Now, like they're used to me.
Thanks, May.
Appreciate it.
The transition to deputies.
Okay. Uh, next, discuss replacing RGU5 at the jail. Um, our heat exchanger went out on U number five at the jail, which is something that we talked about in bike preparations. We knew that there were agents, things are gonna be happening. And it looks like we could be, uh, anywhere from 15 to 24 weeks out on getting replacement. They will be able to make it work right now, but it's, it needs to be replaced.
Do we have the 15 to 24 weeks?
Yes. Well, hopefully we'll get into warmer weather. We're not gonna need the heat, but, uh, right now it's functioning.
And won't affect.
But it has a crackling exchange. And rather than replace the heat exchanger, which is, let's see, outdated, that won't fit now. It would have to be repositioned.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of additional costs. They recommended going with a new unit completely. A lot of additional costs. They recommended going with a new unit completely. Just switch out units, be a lot cheaper labor wise and everything else. And I told Scott to let rec know, go ahead and get it on order, since it is such a long lead time. But this is one of those things that. Again, we discussed it at budget time, that these things are all aging there. And we may have to get on a annual replacement program of some of these units each year. So we don't have this just slap this in the face every time as an emergency.
Well, and what I'm thinking was, we put money, set money aside last year for this, knowing it was coming up, and then we've put some money aside this year, so.
Scott thinks he has enough, and I was wondering, there may be some ARPA funds that we could use to this.
Yeah, I was looking at it this morning.
Ease the pressure on his budget.
Yeah. So, and number one, we, but unfortunately, due to the wait time, I'm assuming we will not have it this fiscal year. I mean, we do have ninety two thousand left in the capital projects of the buildings, if it comes in this year. Otherwise, currently, we still have. A hundred and seventy seven thousand in ARPA funds that has not been spoken for. With the fact that it's probably not coming in until next year. I would kind of maybe lean more that way of approving it out of ARPA funds. I can do up the resolution, then as soon as it happens. Not have to worry about where the money's coming from if we don't have it in capital projects.
And that leaves the money that we already have in capital projects that we. Sold in for the next one.
Yes.
As far as the serviceability, we talked about repositioning it so we can exchange the heat exchangers next time. Or make this more of a maintenance friendly process instead of like new cars.
Short answer, no.
I guess I was thinking in that letter that said something about that, or maybe it was just about the position that it's in, they have to get a crane in, which they're probably going to anyway.
Right.
No matter what.
You can't exactly work out if something else is in, in the way, it's about small items to.
Also, to replace it. If, if they were gonna work on that one, they would have to reposition it with the crane. Because. Finding the area up there, they can't get it to work. Uh, it would have to be moved.
Would this, would this unit be used somewhere else? Could we use what we have somewhere else? Maybe we'll put this one in for repair and move it somewhere else. Something to consider, I guess.
You can't imagine where.
No, we didn't, but you're gonna ask a question.
The only place that uses rooftop units is the jail and courthouse.
But we can get into later, of course.
Yeah, I can get plenty of time this thing.
I would. That, I would think that could definitely be a question for Ricky. If it's even a possibility anywhere on the buildings we own.
Or if we just took the best of them as we start to replace them and put one in storage someplace. In case an emergency comes up, then we have an extra, extra unit.
Capacity becomes the issue in this, in this case, where it can only handle so much BTUs or whatever it's. See what's empty, billions of BTUs, but. Yeah, and you'd think that there might be something else that could use it, maybe a little smaller, or we can get away with a smaller capacity. So we can get to, into that conversation later, of course.
Yeah, that's, um, you know, discussion with Scott and Ricky and God, I guess, but. I know, expert in heating and air conditioning systems. Going by what their recommendation was.
That's good.
Alright, so do we need a motion on that?
If you're going to use ARPA funds, I would prefer that, that way I can do the resolution and get it into the spreadsheet.
I make a motion to replace that unit, um, get it on order and to use ARPA funds.
Second.
All in favor? Hey, discuss, dominates in Kelly's short for Supervisory Representative Assessors Examining Board. Once again, we, we make a selection of who we want to present in conference board, actually. Points the examining board, but we put our candidate forward, so we can have a quick discussion on.
So I just received the application from Kelly. And I just got another email from Brad, because I asked him if the board just needs to make a recommendation on this. And. Kind of the way it sounds. No formal approval, uh, just the recommendation. And then it goes in front of the conference board. And the conference board that's consisted of mayor supervisors and school board makes that formal approval. Who's on the, who, which one of you that?
All three.
You're all three on the conference board?
And representatives from the boards of education as well.
Yeah, that's the school board. Okay, I didn't know if it was one or.
I think you got two representatives, I think.
At least, yeah.
So they should have one from, one from each full district that's in Buchanan County, there's one from East Buchanan, one from. And then Charlie McCardle was there for, I think he represents Independence.
Yeah.
And then, I didn't know if, did East Buchanan have one? But they should.
I don't recall who it was that was there. About it was the one from Jessup. So anyway, I, I assume that they'll be approved tomorrow night at the commission meeting, so.
Yeah. If we get what he speaks again.
Don't. Okay, next, discuss HHS, the government side for the counties and regions. Guess we should add that discussion.
I'm kind of confused by this.
So.
Please, yeah.
HHS, in an effort to have a good plan, transition plan. Is requesting a lot of information out of the CSN system, which is our statewide system. So ISAC is the one who manages that system, and they have turned to the regions and the counties to ask permission. Because we are the ones that enter the information, so they're asking permission to transfer that information to HHS. Most likely, then, we'll share that information with, is what we're guessing.
So ISAC has the physical servers, they have all of the, the records.
Yes, but we put the information, and that's what we utilize for entering all of our funding authorizations and the claims, so the claims go through that. And so the region has to sign off, but then each county has to sign because of the advocate data. Because the advocate is county based versus region based, and they can add more. So this request is for the advocate data, and I brought copies if anybody wants. You want copies, or do you have it?
Yeah, I'd agree.
I think we have one in our packet.
Oh, you have it?
Was there one in the packet, John?
Yeah.
I filled it out in Buchanan County, so I was writing the sign if you want. And the information that they're asking for is the commitment information, including the date of the individual's initial commitment, type of commitment order. Whether juvenile or adult, date of commitment, and name of treatment facility the individual is committed to. Any subsequent changes in treatment facility and date commitment is terminated.
What do we, what do the facilities that they're with have that information? I guess I'm a little, to me, this is like.
The facilities have the information because they get the court order and have to report. So HHS does annually full information on commitments from CSN. Because we don't send it to them, we're not positive what they get, but I know that they get dates and, and. Treatment facilities, so I'm not sure that this really is anything more than what they already get on an annual basis.
Can we see the agreement you have? I'm not sure if it matches up with what we have here.
We received this request for the region, regional data.
I just filled in.
So did our attorney look at it then, maybe?
Yeah, so. Regional attorney reviewed it, he and I had a discussion. His opinion is, is quite likely that HHS owns the information anyway, and ISAC is only the custodian. And when, if, if HHS really owns the information, the custodian has to hand it over. And his opinion is ISAC did this to protect themselves, which nobody would, would blame them for.
Right.
And in an effort to, as I talked about, our priority being a good transition partner. The chair of board and I and our attorney agreed, and, and I already signed it for the region and sent it in. We didn't want to become an obstacle to the transition, right?
Sean did review for the county side, and he said, without knowing. What their, what information they're asking to send, he couldn't comment on, couldn't make a decision, so I sent him. The additional information, this form that you said looks different than yours, you had to click on it to get to that. So I filled in our county and then the specific information based upon what the other one said. Because this is the actual form that needs, and so I sent it to Sean and then also notified him it was on the agenda today, so, but I had, did not hear anything more from him on it.
I mean, assuming he's gonna sign this or agree to it, uh. Make a motion that we accept the contract, uh, pending contingent on the county attorney's approval of this language.
I guess if we already have one legal opinion for the region, and the region and said, said they already own the information, I don't even think we need to wait for Sean's opinion. I don't think it's gonna, it's not gonna put us in any, um, legal, any bad legal position, so.
Did you second?
Um, I'm stuck on the, having Sean's approval on it.
Sure.
I'm stuck on having Sean's approval on it, since we already have the, um, ECR's attorney has already signed off on that's the other's opinion. I believe that's right, isn't it?
Yes, the regional attorney that agreed, that gave the opinion.
Yeah, Sean, I believe, looks out for our interests as a county, and you, the other attorney would look out for their interests, so.
Right.
I guess that's, that's what my thoughts are.
Yeah, but as a county, I'm not gonna hold up the transition either.
So there, we're in impact.
Your thoughts, John?
My opinion is we sign it, it's gonna happen one way or another.
Right. I don't think we have a choice.
That's my opinion.
Would you like to mention your motion, Keith?
Nope. Not at all.
The motion's gonna die away.
It is. I make a motion that we sign the contract.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, ladies.
He signed that, I just wanna make a copy of that, then I'll bring it down to you this one.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, meet with Leanne Harrison, and this is on Certified Local Government Report.
Well, I think most of you know who I am, Leanne Harrison, and. I am chairperson for the Buchanan County Certified Local Government. This, uh, is it for an annual report. On our website, it says, the board is appointed by the Buchanan County Iowa Board of Supervisors at the beginning of each year. This commission is ruled by the bylaws established in nineteen thirty three. The commission works with the State Historic Preservation Office as well as the National Park Service. The commission may conduct studies for the identification and inventories designation of historic districts. And sites meeting the definitions established. We, as a commission, meet quarterly, it's always the second Saturday of January, April, August, and October. And at that time, um, we review any of the national register applications, if there are any at that time. And we also, um, help guidance with the financial. Uh, grants and so forth, which is kind of iffy at the moment for the status of our society also, so. It's up to the individual that wants to put their building or home on the national register for a specific reason. They have to apply for the application to the State Historical Society. And fill out the application and send it back to the State Historical Society. They, down there, o- only meet quarterly also. So, um, if they approve it, they send it back to the county. For their approval, and if we only meet quarterly. And send it back, uh, so this whole application thing could take over a year for designation. Um, there are over twenty buildings and homes in Buchanan County at the present time, um, that are on the national register. And, um. We, uh, also have to send in, uh, to the State Historical Society. Our yearly report, which, um, John has to sign, so. I'll be for you there. But in the way that, um, you know, there were any questions that you guys had for us to.
These people have to.
Oh, yes.
Certain barriers that they have to maintain.
I know, um, the Aurora Historical Society, um, finally just gave up their hands and said, forget it, we're not messing with all that. They have to prove who was the original builder of the building, which, back in the eighteen fifty, eighteen sixties. Where are the records and, yeah, all that kind of stuff, so. And we do meet with the, um. Buchanan County Historical Society as a co-sponsor in November each year. Uh, and invite all the different little museums in the counties, um, that get together, we call it, let's talk turkey, but. It's. If they have any questions or what they have been or aren't doing or suggestions or.
Is it, what they're working on theirs now?
Yes. And I think Brandon is also.
Okay. I don't recall, was, was there on the current list of historical?
I don't think it is, but. It might be listed under whatever bank it was. They've been on it for quite a while. And that, they're supposed to bomb the, um, internet anytime, so.
Any other questions for Leanne, or otherwise I entertain a motion to have me sign that.
Then I'll make a motion.
A second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you.
I always mean to get to the level of, let's talk turkey, and I never, something else is always.
Always, you know, it's always the, the, uh, third Monday in November.
Yeah, look at the record here.
This one's mine.
Yeah. Put it in the file. Of the, um, one of the things that they say is that, is their record keeping it in the courthouse. I know there's a filing cabinet back there in the back hallway, that the second drawer has always been our drawer, but. our drawer, but.
In the back hallway?
Isn't there a little hallway back here? There's no filing cabinets back there.
Oh, and this will be?
Yeah, in this back hall.
Yeah.
Like go to the bathroom? Yeah, there's a filing cabinet back there.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what's in there.
I'm sure.
So the second drawer is supposed to be for the CLG.
Yeah. Good mark.
What's up, everybody? Well, thank you, Leanne. All the guy, all the work you gotta do.
Well, we try, but it sounds like it's gonna get complicated with grants and.
Sad thing is, once we lose our history, we lose it forever.
Right.
It's really hard to retrieve against. So I always worry about the geological society down there.
Yes.
There's a lot of great minds that know a lot down there.
Yeah.
Need some young people to take over. Even Sharky, the ones that keep getting younger, so.
Yes.
Second drawer is all Pioneer Cemetery.
Oh.
We'll have to do some more searching.
Okay.
I don't think any of these have anything in her.
The um
They should be placed in the hundreds.
The um
Not in that drawer. Or um I didn't see.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to do some digging.
Okay. And there should be the original bylaws and stuff, but I I mean, I I have a copy of.
Mm-hmm.
I know, changing rule.
I had no idea it was there, so I learned something today.
Today, yes.
Thank you, Leanne. Appreciate it. With that, we'll go to our public comment.
Don't know why we're here.
Bring it, yeah, let's hear it.
Okay, I was supposed to give a break, is on, I'm gonna ask you right, I'll keep, because I don't know as well as I knew the other two.
First.
Are you for or against local control?
Can I have that before? There's a sample in here you can look through before you get it back to me. That way Leanne can have it. Thank you, please. There's a hall.
I would ask that you hear what Bonnie has to say first before you start cruising over this document here, but uh when she's done, make a look at it.
I believe there's a time and a place and there's there's correct applications.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I believe there's a time and a place, correct applications, and these correct applications, so. Yeah, I I tend to to follow with our ordinances and if I have disagreements with the ordinances, then I make the effort to make those change.
So you want to keep local control loyal?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
As I say, that was a really long answer, or yes or no.
I I guess I misunderstood the question. What was your position?
Once you stop losing local control of one thing, um, that door's gonna be really hard to close. So, I mean, as much as this was not something I wanted to start again, put a lot of effort into it the first time. Um, but I won't let it go, you know, this is our way of life that we're talking about. And uh they have the state come in and just arbitrarily, I mean, everybody knows, have you all read that bill?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody knows that was written by a wind company.
Mm-hmm.
Um, nobody else could. And it's a wind company's dream. You know, there are no hold barred. They can do whatever they want. Um, and this has to be stopped, just period. It has to be stopped. So it's very good. I don't know that there, when last year, I know Plussmith, Kleisman, or.
Clemish.
My people. Clemish, yeah. Um, I know he introduced another bill, so I don't know that it had a tax attached to it. If it did, I.
It did.
It did, okay.
We thought.
Is it the same one?
Similar.
So this isn't gonna die, this is gonna every how happen, this is gonna happen every year, right?
I was surprised when I went into the backside of this to see who was in support of it. I did not see, uh, Mid-America had not thrown support into it yet. Nor, and I didn't see Next Era out there at all. But they they pulled out of our area. I know Next Era.
Somebody's just keeping quiet. It's it's, I mean, that this was so obviously written by a wind company, nobody else would really go.
But then again, you said the first day it dropped too. I mean, you, like, I'm like, whoa. And so when I sent something into our lobbyist, they didn't, they haven't even had a chance to read the bill and summarize it yet or figure it out. And then I put something out on Basecamp and I put it out in the wrong place and I kinda got my. It's okay, it's all good.
Yeah.
He stood there.
Basecamp, I've just gone crazy over the weekend. I've just gotten, I don't know how many notifications you.
Oh, several.
When is Basecamp? Oh, I don't have that.
It's um.
I guess maybe not.
It's like a.
They actually got to sign up for ISAC.
Okay.
And uh, yes, uh generally the assessors have one, the auditors have one, supervisors have one, and it's a way that county supervisors can ask questions and discuss things online to get information, that type of thing.
Yeah.
It's very, very helpful.
Yeah, sounds like something I'll get into real quick.
Yeah, something like, you know, this went on in our county, how'd you guys handle it, that kind of stuff. But so I threw this out there and actually it was supposed to be an email to Lucas and Jamie.
My fear is that they're just gonna read it because when I, I mean, we've already written emails, Craig Johnson's the only one that advances it back, but um he wrote it on, and he answered back to me and said that, look, they'll look good to him. And I'm thinking to myself, what bill did you read?
I know, that's what I was thinking too, because this takes away local control once again. What bill did you read?
Yeah, I don't think you read it. There's this little blurb in the back that kind of summarizes it. If all you read is the first paragraph of that, you won't get the gist of the bill.
Right.
But can you imagine if this bill would go through, what the state of Iowa's gonna look like? It's gonna be everywhere.
Well, and the setbacks that we did on when we did the wind, we did setbacks similar to what Polk County did.
And what were they, fifty-foot setbacks on those phone?
The setbacks, I didn't think the setbacks were very big at all.
Oh.
And but I don't know, I just, I get frustrated with it because I think it just, it stifles where we can put housing at some point in time and everything else. And then I'd rather have houses and people than inanimate objects that do nothing for me.
I'm here over the weekend, there was an article I read that they lost a turbine blade down in Ida County, I think it was, or just broke off.
Yeah, well, that happens frequently.
Yeah.
Yeah, frequently, and if they fly
Then it fires.
a football field, you better not be sitting at your dining room table by a window.
Seems like a little further than a fifty-foot setback.
Watched pretty well.
Yeah, and the fires and and mechanics still, I mean, good lord, that those poor people can, I'm actually, I'm a lot of people that are in certain fields. You know, that's, and the guy out in New York, nothing's been done for him at all, and that's been several years now.
To your point, the the farm ground, I mean, they're even worried about like getting into the rabbits and the deer and they're eating the fiber grass, so maybe it just.
You can't feed it to the cows, something, I mean, it's gonna kill whatever it eats of.
And the background is all the materials that's wasted and put into the ground and you can never get that back out again. And when they come in, they roll in, you're expected to make your roads wide enough, draw their equipment, and then when they pull back out, you have to decrease your road size. You don't even, it just and I see people have been doing tip tristries and everything else to make that happen and you know, the money that you get is just basically spent on getting them in and out of here.
There you go, yeah. It's just, I, that that bill just you know, you want to go out and buy a winery after that, because that that was unbelievable. They, you could, I mean, you cannot tell them, no, what what company's gonna come in here with the thing where you can't tell us also?
Yeah, I didn't see anything better about increasing the surety bonds. I didn't see any other protections against the the taxpayers, the the counties, and yet they want to put the responsibility on us.
Yeah, there's there's no protection, there's nothing.
Doesn't make sense.
Isn't this all energy? It's it's pipeline and it's solar as well. Wasn't that part of the intention of all this?
Yes, the other part.
It's not just wind, which, you know, the back.
So um they have started hiring to retool the Dwayne Earnl. It's supposed to be back online in twenty twenty-eight, I believe. I remember what's been told to me.
It's never shown, it's shut down.
Well, we never hear those cooling towers now. They have, they had a plan, they are tear that now, look, we can't fix that, so look here, we got wind and solar to replace it. Um, and that plan backfired on them a little bit, but you know what, no. They just can't be trusted, that's why I'm like, there is no, there's a huge, huge trust issue there anytime. You know, you can just expect that it's a lie if they open their models into this. And this is crazy, this is absolutely crazy. You have to sit there and fight a ridiculous bill like this to take local control.
Now, Don, you mentioned something about Next Era, and Next Era is involved in Tama County now. You know, there was two companies originally, uh, Wind, the run backed off. Yeah, Next Era has bought their leases and they're very active in what's going on and uh was the one lady that was, came to quite a few of our meetings and backed up. But anyway, she's kind of in charge of that. And and the other thing that that a lot of people don't recognize is all these subsidy subsidy companies underneath them, you know, Next Era has a hundred and thirty. So it it it's all, you know, and BlackRock is involved in a lot of this and, you know, everything's hidden, but we're gonna sell this out to you and those type of things. And and in Tama County, you know, Gladbro raised the size of their turbines, was that this within the last year, and they're leaking already. And in the agreement, you know, where they'll fix your roads
Mm-hmm.
is that the second time around, if Tama County had to do the roads, there was no money because that was already done one time, that was part of the original lease. So, and and my dad used to work for the county, and when you get good basis of a gravel road, which I'm sure you all know, and once you disturb that, it's never gonna be the same. And you can go up to up by New Hampton, which they did all that stuff, and those roads are just so mushy and misty, they're not very good. So you, yeah, and they're not gonna give up, they've got money and and.
But they don't have the subsidies anymore.
The the on-land ones, I thought, dude, I thought it was just.
I think they started with the offshore stuff first, I'm not sure how that probably gotten with the on-land stuff there.
Yeah, I don't think so either. I don't think.
And next thing you have, part of the big push to try and get these going is they wanted to do it before the subsidies run out.
Yeah, because once they get in, once they start, they're considered in. And they can get their available subsidies are available to them. If they haven't started yet, then they're all in the cold. So, yeah, this is a huge push for money, that, you know, and that's what it is.
Just dig a hole and we start it, right?
Yeah.
True.
Um, there, Swatty is also over in Jackson and Clayton County.
Oh, yeah.
Clayton County, I mean. And so I suspect that's probably Next Era over there also in those two counties. Um, if you remember back two and a half years ago or so, here, Next Era started getting people signing leases and all that, and it was kept quiet, hush, 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 and they were what? Until all of a sudden we found out about it and you know what hit the fan, but it was almost a year and a half, they were out incognito, doing all the time on the table, right? What do you think's happening now with this this SS three seventy-six? The politicians, it's all quiet and under the table, isn't it? They're trying to rail where this should be for all the people mind out about. It's kind of like all over again, same thing.
Well, I see last week, uh, I don't know if it was the EU or Britain, I assume it was the EU, Chris Wright was talking with them about the goal of net zero doesn't make sense. All it does is 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 choke off the the British expansion of industrialization. So, I mean, you're you're kind of seeing one thing at the federal level and you're seeing another thing at the state level and here at the county level, we're trying to make some common sense out of it, so.
Well, there is no common sense to net zero. There, I mean, you just can't do it. You can't, you can't, we can't live off of wind turbines and solar. You know, there's gonna be a time where nobody has electricity.
Well, I think, who's that freak? What are you gonna do when the sun don't shine and when the wind don't blow?
And you know what?
What are you gonna rely on? Everything else, you're taking it out. It's all, so there you sit. Your back and back is gonna get about five hours of worth and then everything shuts out.
Well, California was telling them, not Jersey, they're looking at vehicles during the day, wait till night, the demand's less.
Another old story, EVs, yeah. Another scary thing is the the two companies, whatever AI companies that are coming into Cedar Rapids, that area there, they're gonna, they're trying to rely on all the, all of the wind, you know, all of the connections, the electrical, you know, the solar and and they're in that game plan as well. And there are also the 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 companies like in Des Moines, you mentioned that, you know, they're using up all water. I mean, what are we gonna do if we don't have water? And then we even sold water to California. You know, it's, it it's a big scheme and a big scam and and you know what? They don't care about us. It's about.
So the the data centers, that when there's a surplus in energy, that's that's kind of when they jump up their their additional processing power and things like that because they want to make make more efficient use of 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 their power availability. So I can see where they're they're trying to ride that backside of of power production, but if we had a a stable energy source, then that would be another conversation.
Like the nuclear power plant?
Daily usage, it peaks and drops and depends on the heat and depends on the upsides of Iowa Iowa State Football Gate. No, I'm just kidding, but no, it it market demands have have a reason and, you know, there's, like I said, there's a time and place for everything, but we gotta figure out some moderation.
You know, it's interesting, because somebody somebody wrote something and and it's not science, it's it's politics. If you go back to the sixties, we were talking about all the oil being, uh, didn't happen. There's more oil supplies underneath the United States and and Alaska and.
I can tell you.
The seventies was the ice age, you know, that never happened. And uh then it was like all the acid rain in the eighties was gonna destroy the crops. The ozone layer, the ozone was gonna be destroyed in the nine, in the nineties. The two thousands or the glaciers were gonna melt and they were gonna flood the East Coast, same way with the two thousand and ten rising sea levels and underwater. But you know what? It, like with all this that we're dealing with now, our taxes go up, our electrical rates go up, and, you know, none of this has ever come true. And it seems like there's one party that's pushed this um with each of the decades, and I'm not, you guys can talk about that and think about what's more. Again, this is not science. And and they talked about science. Um, you you listen to some people speak and scientists speak and something like this, there's signs that we were pushed down our throat with COVID and all that stuff, and then there's true science. And and with the past administrations stifling our freedom of speech, um, we couldn't talk and say, hey, this is this is our idea, this is our thoughts, this is our research. But aren't you, as a scientist, supposed to not always think that the things you put out today is is perfect? That you're always questioning what what's going on? And we weren't allowed to question anything under that past administration.
No.
So anyway, that's my political speech for the day, but I'm really concerned about what's going on and and doesn't our governor support some of this stuff?
A lot of it, yeah.
Yeah, and Grassroots supported, so how do we, you know, if we're all Republicans in here, I mean, you know, party, the parties aren't what they used to when when we were younger. And and they don't protect us, the citizens, like they should.
It's more important, I think, the uh almighty dollar is getting in the way of some of this thing.
Yes. Who's who owns it?
Frightening.
Right.
Uh, to dovetail onto your thing about predictions and uh science and I read an interesting article over the weekend that they found that the COVID vaccine with the mRNA vaccine is causing recurring COVID because it stores that I call it uh that DNA in your system, and it can regenerate itself.
Well.
Which
I think it.
It explains some of the health issues that are cropping up.
Well, I had the mRNA, and I told you what, you know, every three to six months, I was either getting a stint put in, uh, getting a balloon put in, total of four balloons were put in in that that time period since, what, two thousand and twenty-one, when I took that shot.
Mm-hmm.
And I talked to my cardiologist, I talked to my doctor, and and not that I'm a a lawsuit happy person, they, all they said is to print them, but that's, it's too early to tell. Well, that's 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 a lot of things where, you know.
It's just kind of a random coincidence.
Hmm, yeah.
And there's gonna be another one here shortly, I guess, but you know, and the the plaque and when its arteries getting a little closer to get surgical, so. Hey, I haven't been, I haven't been there for a heart since since July.
Other comments?
Last March ninth, Bonnie and I went up to Arlington to legislative session where Chad Engle was there, Mike Clemish was there, uh, Craig Johnson, uh, so, there was a fifth person there. Anyway, I kind of said something to Clemish about these sponsoring that that time was SS thirty-one sixty-nine. And I said, well, it was taken.
And it said, well, it was taking away local control, and I had a problem with that, and I was kinda chastising him, I guess, a little bit, he kinda got a little indignant, said, well. I can figure local control, I don't want that, I just have to be the guy that has to bring the grill up, okay, so I backed off. But now what's going on, it's the same guy who's bringing out the same thing. So I'm starting to wonder where he is on this, if, if, if he's so much against it, why would he be?
Bringing it up, why would somebody else be bringing it up?
Right, if you don't believe, believe in it, then why would you bring it up?
Sure, exactly.
Sure, how that, somebody maybe give me a quick explanation of that, because I've probably slept through all this since.
It, it, it could be one of those things where they wanted to get it up, out there so they could have debate about it, but. It does make you really wonder.
Yeah, but if somebody hands a senator or legislator a bill, um, or as I, you know, whoever writes them. Do they have to then present it to everybody, or can they just say, no, I'm gonna wrong about that, I don't believe in that, or what, how does that work?
I think it's discussion, send it in the committee for discussion, but it doesn't have to go forward.
So it's, it's that senator representative's discretion, whether or not they want to move it forward to a committee as, as you described, then. It goes forward to whatever other committees they, they think need to hear about it and weigh in on it, and then at some point, it, it gets through. Believe they talk, talk about the first funnel and the second funnel, conversations like that, if it doesn't get passed. The leadership, then it's gonna get to the governor either way, so there's kind of a heck of a process.
Right, but even as a leadership, if you didn't believe in it or you say, you know what, I don't, I'm, we, we tried this last year, it didn't work, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put it in front, you find somebody else to do this.
Yeah.
I mean, can't you do that, I mean, as.
So that's, that's what they talk about, the first funnel and the second funnel, so if, if somebody doesn't allow it through that first funnel, then. But that's a very small group.
Gets the bill, you know, the first, if, if somebody, you know, Joe Bill comes and hands you.
Sure.
Um, a bill and says, well, I want this put through, do you have the right as a legislator to say?
I don't know why they wouldn't.
Many chairman.
Seriously?
Dictates what gets discussed, and if he doesn't want to discuss, he won't get it brought forward.
But if he's a committee chairman and he brings it forward, then he obviously wants to discuss it.
Yeah. They're getting a lot of pressure from somebody else, they wanna discuss it.
That's where I'm at on the topic, yeah.
Plus, the other thing is, how many people, have to look at the bills, but they wanna be loyal to the party, and I, I know there's one person that's been mentioned in here. That went back to the ESAs and all that garbage a year ago with education. And fell into the, was supportive of it, and I don't think understood what was, it was all about. And, and, and I believe it's gonna be the same way, it's like, okay, I'm just gonna please, see how I can raise in the party.
Or not even read the bill, write the little summary on the back or something, and that's about what scares me, is do they even read the bill, although this is a long bill, I don't think.
Well, and I did get a response from Engels, and his response back to me was, um, it's on the senate side, so, and he hadn't, hadn't looked at it yet, but he will keep an eye out for it, so. Chad's always pretty responsive, Chad Engels. And he doesn't always go along party lines, he kind of votes, he reads, I think he actually reads his stuff and thinks about it.
This is another league business and. It's threats of being primaried and everything else, and you don't toe the party line and. It's kind of sad commentary. There's a lot of power in the lobbyists, you know, but who's ever back?
Don, I didn't quite get what you said about Engels, I didn't hear, what was that about Engels?
Said he, um, he said that, um, he didn't, it was on the senate side, we didn't really, hadn't read the bill yet, but he was going to keep an eye out for it.
Okay. Craig Johnson, I don't think he read it either, what he answered Bonnie's email.
I suggest, when I sent an email back to him, I nicely suggested, because he does answer me all the time, so I, I nicely suggested that he actually read the bill.
I feel like sending him our ordinance and saying, now put this alongside the bill, and tell me, do we really have local control with this bill? Because.
Well, you're gonna read that bill and come to that conclusion that you're capable.
Do you know if there's any um town halls coming up?
Well, there is the comment period on those, there are a portion of those bills, any individual or. I mean, even as a board, we can write something up and put our comments on the, on the bill.
Right, but do, is, do we have any town halls coming up in the area with the representatives meeting?
I can't think of. Yeah.
There'll be another one of those coming up, I think. Bill in hand, you know?
Yeah. The other thing is, actions are louder than words, and some are very good at uh telling you what they think you wanna hear and then when it comes down to it, how do they vote?
Yeah.
Danny. Nice live fun.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Isn't it the essence?
Anything else, um, anything, a motion to adjourn?
On the commotion?
Second.
On your favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We'll adjourn, thank you, thank you for listening to it.